We'll call the City Commission meeting to order. This is a City Commission meeting plus a reorganization meeting. The first thing on the agenda is oath of the elected officer. I guess I will start since I'm the first on that. I, Larry Thomas of Washburn, North Dakota, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of North Dakota, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of President of the City Commission according to the best of my abilities, so help me God, under pains and penalties and perjury.
I, Noel Cole of Washburn, North Dakota, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of North Dakota, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Office of City Commission according to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
I, Kit Baumann, Washburn, North Dakota, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of North Dakota. I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of City Commissioner of City Washburn according to the best of my abilities, so help me God, under pains and penalties and perjury.
I, Reese Bam of Washburn, North Dakota, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of North Dakota, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of City Commission according to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Okay, reorganization of the commission. I would like to keep the streets if nobody has a problem with that. Is someone here who can keep out or into, or?
Yep.
Kit?
Yes, I'll keep the place in fire.
Okay, Noah?
The Human Resources.
We basically have two more. We have financial and buildings and grounds. Do you have a question about one of those, or?
Financial.
Did you want to continue on the plan in Azoni for the county also?
Sure.
Forest, there's supposed to be on there too?
That's further down. Yeah, we'll get to that, that's a little bit further down. And then Reese, that was, I knew I always get stuck with what's left. You'd have, you'd get buildings and grounds. So we need a motion to approve the appointments. We should, well, we should have another one on Human Resources. We should have two, Keith, if you want to stay on that. Okay, I will make a motion that we accept she's appointments or portfolios. Okay, is there any further discussion on those? Everybody okay on them? Hey Keith?
Hi.
Hey.
Hi.
Hi. Okay, Mark Well?
This fine. I guess in here because of article that was written in the paper. I guess my first question is, Mr. Thomas has any, if he thinks anything that was written is correct?
More than likely not. I'm not saying everything's correct in there. I don't, I can't, I felt actually, if you had asked me earlier to read through it and pick what I didn't think was correct, I could have, can't do you, but.
Okay, well, that's fine. So you haven't had a chance to read all of it?
I scanned it, you know, like a week ago, whatever, whenever it came out.
If you don't mind, if I go through it, and then, any commissioners have any questions, or?
I guess what, so you want to talk about the appointment of the auditor?
Yeah. Well, some of the statements in here are misleading to Joan Zimmerman, is what I feel. The past 10-plus years, I've been working with the city. I've worked with the last three auditors, Joel Freese, Melissa Price, and Joan Zimmerman. I felt all three did an excellent job. They fulfilled their obligation, worked well with the community, and, I can't see an issue at all. In the past four years, I've been on the Special Assessment Committee, working directly with Joan Zimmerman. She's done an excellent job getting us the information, dealing with issues, just whatever that we asked her to do for accounting or whatever, you know. A big part of it is trying to figure out who's going to pay what in taxes. So we're always mashing numbers, giving her the brunt of the job, because we ask her something and she's got to come back to the numbers. She's always been alight, just excellent. She comes back with the information and then we go and we change the numbers on there and she comes back again. I mean, she's, she's a pleasure to work with. A little bit of history, I was on the commission when we hired Joan as Melissa Price's assistant. Melissa was going through some health issues. We need somebody responsible and dedicated and somebody that could fill the auditor job when Melissa was out. And so Ray Hager and Kim Cloud were on committee for the interview process. They felt that she was the best person for the job. And so during the commission meeting, we made a motion to accept her into a full-time position, which has worked out well, because eventually Melissa has stepped down and Joan was able to step right in and continue the job. But in 2008, when this happened, Larry was working for the city. And when we hired Joan, Larry decided to step down.
From '20, I think it was taken.
What's that?
I left in 2010.
Was it 2010?
Same.
Okay. Well, 2010, when we made Joan a partner of the Washburn, City Augurder position, Larry stepped down because he couldn't work with Joan. Is that correct?
That's not correct. That's why I stepped down.
Because when we appoint, well, the reason why I make that statement is that when we made a motion and we asked to hire Joan, Larry stepped out of the meeting and said, "I quit."
I know your back's wrong.
I was there, Larry.
So was I.
Anyways, also, one of the commissioners was Ray Hager. And Ray can't be here tonight because of a family issue. So he asked me to speak on behalf of him, and I think this is very important. It states here, "I would like Mark Well to speak on my behalf in regards to Larry Thomas' problems with Joan Zimmerman. When I was on the City Commission, Larry Thomas said he would quit working for the city if Joan Zimmerman was hired for the office position. Then Larry quit and Joan was hired." Ray Hager.
That's not terribly accurate.
His statement, my statement?
Well, I think personally, if he has a statement, he should be here too, you know.
Well, I agree. But with these statements that are in the paper, aren't accurate either. That's what I feel, because I've worked with Joan personally since she's been hired, and she's done nothing but an excellent job. I don't think she deserves some of these statements to be thrown at like this. I mean.
Nothing was thrown at her. I mean, I, I made a statement that I was going to recommend, you know, because I wasn't satisfied with her performance, and she asked why, and so I was, I was fine.
But, the city used to, Dwight Edelman, do the accounting for the city. When he stepped down on the commission at that time, put those duties on the auditor, and since that time, the auditor position hasn't messed a beat. There hasn't been any imperfections. Because I've been involved with the city, I haven't heard of anything. You know, I think that the job of an auditor is very stressful. You're dealing with different issues week to week. I'm sure you guys all know that. Come Monday, you don't know what happens over the weekend. I mean, they're dealing directly with citizens of Washburn. Sometimes it's not a very peaceful situation, and they're supposed to sit there and try to calm things down, work through the problems. And I think Joan is doing an excellent job. And I think it would be a big mistake to try to replace her. She's committed, her family is committed, also on a beautification committee. She's volunteered, her husband has volunteered before he was a city worker, their children have volunteered. I mean, they love this community, they're going to work for the community, they're going to do the best thing for this community. Does anyone have any questions?
I guess, Mark, you had highlighted some things in the article, do you want to go through those?
Sure. There was some questions about her misuse of entrusted property. No explanation was given, either during or after the meeting.
Actually, there actually was, was, you know, but, you know, I said that she had, you know, given herself an unauthorized second-truth policy. No previous policy. I brought that up, so that apparently is wrong, so.
Well, just for discussion's sake, on that particular topic, I guess, what are the checks and balances for that? You know, is one person able to make that change and then approve that change? Are there separate layers looking at that?
Should go through the City Commission, I would assume.
I would just like to say again, I did not take out an insurance policy for myself. You have another employee who also works here. He took out a health insurance policy. But we have the employee handbook, and that was his choice to do so. Keith, I brought it to you, and as I do with a lot of portfolios, and I'm not, I'm not blaming or saying anything, but with the portfolios, I provide the information if it's brought up at the City Commission, that's under your guys' portfolios. It was not hidden, it's on the invoices every month. My name, as well as Kim's name, is on that invoice every month. We're DZ, so we are at the back of the invoice, so can't help that, but it's completely transparent. There was nothing, nothing was done underhanded. I decreased my policy from a family to a single policy to lessen the financial impact to the city of Washburn, whereas according to the employee handbook, it could have been two family policies, and I did not feel correct in doing that, so I opted to move to a single policy. There are some overlapping benefits, but that's, that's very common and normal in a situation where you have two employees who are working for the same company. Now, as far as the City Commission is concerned, in our employee handbook, if that is something that, as a commission, you guys would like to change, you are certainly within your rights and powers to do so.
I will say the city handbook's kind of vague. Dave could speak on this or not. I guess he doesn't want to. But it says every employee is offered a health insurance at least.
Every full-time employee is offered a benefit package that includes, but is not limited to health insurance, vision, dental, life, disability, and.
So it doesn't say what, how you look for insurance?
Sure.
But basically, you're covered under two problems.
Yes, because you have two people who work full-time for the city of Washburn, and that is a benefit that is afforded for each of those individuals. It's no different than Sharon and I each having a health insurance policy also.
Basically, it says you will be provided with health insurance, so then say you'll each have your own policy, just for clarification.
Well, for clarification, you had 12 months to look at that bill. I did not do anything underhanded. The information on the invoices are there every month. I discussed it with Keith, and.
The point is, it should have been brought up, you know, when you did it, and basically, what you said, if I remember correctly, is insurance went up a dollar per policy, and that was all that was said last year.
And it was.
You know, if you guys as a city want to change the policy, just, you can change it, you know, I know that there has been issues in the state and the county governments.
I'm sorry, can, I don't know what form is.
Raise your hand.
But can I speak on behalf of somebody who works with health insurance as a professional and who also deals with dual insurance as a personal person?
Sure.
Okay.
State your name.
Kristy Jager, and I'm speaking on behalf of working for health insurance company for 12 years. As a claims processor, I deal daily with COB, which is also known as Coordination of Benefits, which means an insurer will have two insurances. There are many times that our subscribers and their spouses each carry an EDMA policy, whether it's through the same business, their coworkers, or their separate businesses completely. Having dual coverage, or COB, is probably the smartest thing that a family can do in this economy. By having dual insurances, you're guaranteeing yourself that you are going to have very little to no medical expenses. And it is my understanding that that is not double-dipping. I work with it on a federal level, a state level, and I also deal with it with myself. My two oldest boys have dual insurance, one through Chad and one through Lee. It's not double-dipping. There is nothing wrong with that, and you have publicly accused somebody of it.
I, I didn't publicly accuse her or anything, she asked for an explanation, I could hold it to her.
And you went on record, and it's in the paper, that it's double-dipping.
I said I thought it was, because, like I said, it should have been approved by the City Commission.
But where in the handbook does it say that it has to be approved through the City Commission?
I would have to have the handbook in front of me, but I don't.
Can that be provided? Do we have an?
It probably doesn't say that, but that's, you know, the way cities operate, is things come before the City Commission.
Well, I would, I would highly recommend that it be looked at and handled in a more professional way.
Okay. Thank you. Or anything else, or? No? Okay, thank you.
I guess the last thing is, a number of people, when they found out that, wanted to come in and talk about this, I've been talked to, that people are appalled by Mr. Thomas's actions in the last year or so. It seems like everything is being nitpicked against Joan and her job, kind of setting a standard that she's not fulfilling her obligations. I just feel that that's totally not true, and I think there's some prior evidence that he doesn't like Joan, so that he wants to appoint somebody else into that position. That's my opinion.
Good, thank you.
Dave, you want to appoint another officer?
Can I, before we move forward, can I speak on my own behalf?
Sure.
Is that all right?
Take this over.
Everyone's aware, we've had a couple weeks to think about the upcoming meeting, and honestly, I've come up with quite a few different things that I wanted to say on my behalf or how to, how to deal with it. I ran through quite a few different scenarios and outcomes, and I decided that I would just approach it from a standpoint of trying to convince you all while I'm, why I'm still on the table, because I think I just still have some value. For the city of Washburn, I'm going to read it, so I'll put that. I've been with the city of Washburn since 2008 as a deputy auditor, and I then transferred or transitioned to the auditor in 2014 when Melissa Price left. It, it honestly wasn't that easy, the transition. I was by myself for a number of, number of months and had a number of things to take care of as, in the auditor role, as well as the deputy auditor, auditor role. And then I was given Sharon, who has saved us. The amount of learning that is involved in being an auditor, you know, it is not just, it's not just bookkeeping. Keeping everything in accordance with local, state, and federal laws is huge. The maneuvering through the state can, Century Code alone is, is a process that takes quite a while to, to learn what we're able to do. But on top of the normal learning curve that comes with every job, the city of Washburn has had quite a few extra challenges that I, in this office, have been responsible for. Just a quick list, we've done two audits, one federal, special assessing of the 2013 project, planning and implementation of 1415 project, planning and implementation of the 2016 project. Two budgets, one that was, included a significant overhaul of the funds through the property tax reform law, and that was last year. I've dealt with the special election after the president of the commission resigned, open meeting violation, and the ever-changing policies and procedures at the request of the commissioners, all of which have been dealt with, with, at all times. My primary focus was to lessen the impact to the residents as well as the commissioners. I do agree with Larry, the 2015 budget hearing was less than be desired. He was, he was correct that it, we had, I've had better showings. In my defense of that, that budget document was sent out three times, and I never heard any comments or corrections from any commissioners until the hearing began, at which time Commissioner Thomas made the corrections that he thought were necessary, and he said he'd only looked at it the night before. It's difficult to take a document that took two weeks for me to compile the information that everybody needed after we had the, the first budget meeting, and then we compile it and revamp it in an hour and a half, and do it in a manner to where, I couldn't think at the end of it. I revamped two weeks worth of work in an hour and a half. So yeah, and by the end, it was a mess, we got it worked out, the budget got to the county, was it great? Nope. What happened again is Noel asked me the other day, "No, I, I learned pretty quickly what, what is, what works and what's not." That, that didn't work, but I, I did revamp two weeks of work within an hour and a half.
So Joan, when was that meeting?
It was in October of 2015.
Stranger information, I guess, is?
I received three evaluations in the eight years I've been here, and I've never had a formal complaint brought to my attention. On my last evaluation, it was noted for me to include more information regarding agenda items and to make commissioners aware of budget change, aware of changes to budgets, agendas, which I have made it my priority to do. I have a priority to send out things as much as I can, I pass it on as fast as I can. Failure to perform my duties has never been discussed with me or brought up, other than last week. It's impossible for me to fix something that I have no ideas happening. The other item discussed at length at my evaluation, were my concerns about the sometimes hostile work environment at the hands of Commissioner Thomas? At that time, I was extremely concerned about the impending open meeting violation investigation, and my certainty that he was going to name me as being at fault in his response to the Attorney General, and he did. Commissioner Thomas was directly asked if the press should be notified at the garbage meeting, notify, if I should notify the press, if Sharon and I should be there, or if it should be posted, and he told me no, and he would not tell us what time the meeting was. We thought at what time the meeting was for Commissioner Baumann.
You asked me, you said, "Do we want to invite anybody else?", and I said, "Why would we?"
I.
And I, because, and you should have informed me that, well, according to the Century Code, this is what needs to be done.
Sharon, Brian, and I were all in the office, and I said, "Would you like me to contact the press or post it?", and you said, "No."
No.
Yes, you did, sir.
No.
Anyway. And it wasn't a concern for me to be named in that Attorney General meeting. And you refused to off, you refused to give that document to the office, at which point I had to contact Ms. Dupontis and ask her to send you an email regarding open record laws, because as the paper had requested that of us, I was now concerned that we were in an open record violation.
Are you saying why you should stay here rather than attacking me or?
I'm actually not attacking you, Larry. I'm kind of at a point where I want to work for the city of Washburn, I want to do my job, but whatever has, is happening, it needs to stop. We all need to be able to just move forward and get our citizens and our people through this huge magnitude of work that we all have looking at us, whether it's the street problems, projects, whatever else is going on, we all have a responsibility to lessen that impact for everybody, and that's what I want to do. Truly, I do. As the city of Washburn moves forward through the second half of the year, the amount of work facing our office is impressive, to say the least. We have another audit coming up, we have a special assessment hearing next month, which will then in turn be to process in about 3,000 amateurizations. We have the ongoing 2016 project bonding for those projects, possible interim funding means as our bonding, and SRF funding has not come through yet. I believe I've emailed and discussed that with you. We have the 2017 budget again, that is starting in July, and this is in addition to the day-to-day work that we see and the people that we need to help within the community. I, if we're talking about the betterment of our community, I don't think that taking me out of the equation is in the best interest of Washburn, along with the amount of information that I have on whether it be just in my brain, from the history from being here so long, on parcel history, project history, people history, the laws, the commission policies, different policies that, you know, I have that, and I, I think I have a lot more to offer the city of Washburn, and I would like the opportunity to give it. Since I successfully wrote a grant for the Safe Route Schools in 2009, in 2012, I wrote the grant to finish with the special road funds grant, to finish off Boat Ramp Road. That was a 16-point grant match. And in 2015, I received an additional $207,000 for the next leg, which is Riverside Park Road, which goes, which will pave the rest of it that we're doing this summer. So I think I bring a lot to the table for all of you guys, as well as for the city of Washburn. So thank you for listening, I appreciate it.
I'd just like to point out that, you know, I, I did announce this at the last meeting to, you know, so it wouldn't be a big surprise coming, which affords your chance to defend yourself, so. Anyway, so move on to the appointment of officers. I'll start with auditor. I'm going to make a motion that we do not reappoint Joan as the city auditor. Can I make a motion? Is there a second? Okay, we have a second, the motion dies. So we're still at the auditor? Want to move on to the deputy auditor?
No, I think we can stay at auditor, so we're looking for a motion.
We're looking for a motion to appoint...
I make a motion to appoint Joan as the reappointed auditor.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, may I have a discussion? You want, Keith?
I...
Reese? Good?
Nope.
Come on. No. Okay. Now move on to deputy auditor.
I'll make a motion that Sharon Hendrickson be reappointed as deputy auditor.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, may I have a discussion on that?
I...
Reese?
Hi.
Come on. Name of the city attorney? That would be Dela Office.
I move that we appoint Dela Office as our city attorney.
Take about a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion on that?
I...
Reese?
Hi.
Hi.
And the city engineer, which is A2S Advanced Engineering Environmental Services. I'll make a motion to approve our appointment of the engineer.
I'll second that.
I'm sorry?
I'll second that.
Okay, may I have a discussion on that? Keith?
I...
Reese? Hi.
Come on. Okay. Question the vice president? Keith has been the vice president? I don't know if he still wants it?
Somebody else wants, so that's fine.
Does anybody have desire to be the vice president? Or is somebody gonna nominate Keith as the vice president?
I'll need Keith.
Do we have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? Keith?
I...
Reese? Hi.
I...
Appoint the One Ten Sales Tax Committee. I'm currently on that now. If somebody else would like it, that would be fine, or I will stay. That will be a motion then.
I move that Larry stays on One Ten City Sales Tax.
Do we have a second?
Second.
May I have a further discussion on that? Reese?
I...
Reese?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Airport Authority. Who's on that now?
Tony Marand, he said that he is willing to continue to serve on that if you guys wanted him to.
Should there be a commission on that bill?
It always has been.
It always has been, right, yeah.
Does that, does Duane still stay on or did they swap?
You would go before him?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Okay, so, you have a big...
I'll move that Reese be appointed to the airport authority board.
I'll second. Any further discussion on that? Reese?
I...
Okay.
Hi.
Appoint the Forest Board? Keith, you're on that, right?
Yeah, I would just sort of like to stay on that, being that we've got some projects that are coming up.
Okay, we, I'll look to appoint, reappoint Keith Forest Board?
I'll second that.
Uh, any further discussion? Keith?
I...
Uh, Reese?
Hi.
Good?
Hi.
Appointing to County Planning and Zoning Board. Noel's on that right now. Would you like to stay on that? Is that fine with everybody?
Yep.
Okay, anybody have a motion on that?
I move that we have Noel on the County Planning and Zoning Board.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? Keith?
I...
Reese?
Hi.
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 Resolution sending, order bond limit, I think there's something in here on that. So this is for $2 million?
This is an application that's filled out with the North Dakota Insurance Department. They fill it out and then they set, they determine what the, the amount of the bond is, it's a blanket bond for all the officials and employees within the city of Washburn.
Okay. Has it, it's been $2 million for a while, has it, or?
It's actually, it's fluctually, it has been, it's gone a couple times, it was down a little bit lower, but then now it's back up there.
Just like through the county there, or through the state?
Um, it's through the North Dakota Insurance Department State Bond.
I'm going to approve the bond limit, is that an order bond limit?
Is this an annual review?
Um, yes. And Joan, this is out the recommendation of the state, I would assume, for $2 million. I'll move that we go with the state's recommendation of $2 million for the bond.
Do a second.
Sorry.
Okay, may I have a discussion on that? Keith?
I...
Reese?
I...
Hi.
Setback variance for Town Sailor, uh, wants to plan a zoning, basically have a very, very tiny yard there in the old part of town. It's on 12th Street, 315 12th Street, if anybody knows where that is. Pete knows, it's almost right past you. They want to put up a garden shed, planning and zoning, but yeah, uh, they recommended a approval for the, uh, the variance.
Any neighbors come and issues?
There's no issues, no removal or anything?
No, it's in the backyard. And then there's actually a fence in the back in the neighbor's, I think shed is like too deep from the fence anyways. So planning and zoning recommend approval, so will be a motion to approve.
I move that we approve the setback variance for Town Sailor.
Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I...
Reese?
Hi. All right.
Uh, a little opinion from the city attorney on the language, timing, zoning ordinance.
I received a letter from David Lundell, you guys, at the last state commission meeting, you were requested that I send the ordinance to him and get an opinion as to the, um, the verbiage in regards to the proposed go-kart track of Long Border Lane. The line in question is it's under the approved uses for the, in a, an approved use within a highly commercial district. You received the letter, do you want me to read it, or?
Well, basically, just, he said that, we can just basically, he said it should be an indoor facility, according to ordinance. And we agreed that we would go with our attorney's recommendation, so, you know, so that's, I guess that means that they can't do their go-kart track there, so, according to ordinance, you know, they would have to, to, especially use permit, which, they would have to have all the neighbors' approval and everything, so, you know, I guess the next step is up to them, so. Okay. Jasper?
I got one important thing for everyone tonight, has to do with the project funding for the 2016 project. So just to give you guys a little bit of history, when we started the project, we were going to use a combination of drinking water SRF, clean water SRF, and then bond a portion of the project that SRF would not cover. Through that process, we missed the deadline for the drinking water SRF application, I think was, which is in September, the city decided after that to proceed with the project for next year, for this year. But they would allow us to add on to the loan from the previous project. In talking with the bonding attorney, he recommended that we do not do that, since it is an asset project, it is much cleaner to just end one loan with this project and start a new one, or a new funding source for another project. So we kind of took drinking water off the table, and now we're left with clean water and just bonding for this year's project. So we were going to have about an even split of $900,000 apiece for the three of them, for a total of about 2.7 million. But now we're looking at just $900,000 from drinking, or clean water SRF and bonding the remaining 1.8. And the bonding, people are coming back and saying they can compete pretty close with the SRF interest rate of two and a half percent. So I guess, from an accounting standpoint, at the end of the project, when you go through and do the assessment, and Joan can attest to this, if you have one funding source with one interest rate, it's much, much easier to, to finish the project. So I guess, I guess I'm here tonight to, since the commission previously voted to use all three funding sources, to have the commission decide if they would just proceed with bonding the entire project. You can, you still have, you have to bond no matter what, and that was understood, now it's just the amount.
And then later, we'll decide how many years we're gonna have that bond for.
Correct, you would, yep. You could do it 20 or 30 year, or whatever, yeah. So you are approved for a $900,000 clean water SRF loan at two and a half percent. So you can use that and bond the remaining portion of the project, which is about 1.8 million, or a total of roughly 2.7, or you can just bond the entire thing.
And what percentage would that...
We don't know exactly yet, but they, they think they can come close to the SRF.
Mike Mastrom was just, it was a little bit less than two and a half is what he thought the bond, and then, you know, there's a little bit of an administrative fee on top of that, so he figured it was pretty close, that you could do. Granted, that's what he does for a living, so it's, it's not promoting too, so.
Sure, it, it, even if it does cost a little bit more on the bonding side, our fees actually come down a little bit, because there's less work for us to do with processing the SRF application and the, I put a lot of work into balancing the three different funding sources on the five different districts on the last project, and I can tell you it would be, you know, from my perspective, much easier and simpler to, to just bond the project.
You want action tonight?
Yeah, it's important, because they need to get going on.
Yeah, I talked with both David and Jasper about this, and I mean, it's kind of a no-brainer, you know, we're gonna maybe pay just a little bit more on one end, but we'll save it on the engineering and everything else on the other end, plus, you know, it would be a lot less work for the city, a lot easier, so, I think it makes sense.
Just curious, how long does that take, the paperwork to go through?
The bonding stuff?
Yeah.
If we know, right, we can give him a call tomorrow, he can start on it, and it's probably a couple, about with the 4th of July, probably three weeks, four weeks, maybe.
But again, we don't need to know the years right now that we need to bond for, we don't need to know 20 years. No.
Although they'll present that...
That doesn't figure into the interest rate, I thought it...
No, we're gonna need to know, Keith, we're gonna need to know it sooner than later, yeah.
Because you're, the, the, the interest rate on the bond change is depending upon the number of years that you're gonna take it out for. I mean, not hugely, but it does play a role in...
Yeah, I think the last one we did for 20 years, right?
Yes. We've been doing 20 for the last...
Well, regardless, they, they have to present you with, you know, what your, what your total that you're gonna bond is, what the interest rate is, and you have to vote on that. So whether that's at next week's meeting, or a special meeting after that, just to approve what the total bond is and interest rate, they, I mean, I think that would, I mean, that's something the commission definitely needs to see.
If you want, I can talk to him tomorrow, maybe by the next meeting, get the information, he can give you an idea what the rates are. For, you know, versus 15, 20, or 25, whatever.
But I think we've already went through that last time. I'll move that we bond the 2.7 million dollars at a 20-year bond.
Is it gonna be 2.7, or is that...
Well, I'd estimate it. We'll come, okay, we'll come back for the final number for everyone to see, so.
Okay, the motion, I'll second that motion. Any further discussion on that, please? Keith?
I...
Reese?
Hi.
I have some other items, but they can wait till next week.
Okay.
And I don't know, if he needs to be here for the next agenda item?
Yes, I was gonna, disposal of the private time being waste.
Okay.
Is there an issue with that, or what?
I was just at the construction meeting and I thought it's something that should be run through the city commission, just like our millings and that, probably won't be an issue or anything. But I understand that we're sending the concrete that's torn out, out to someone's house, or how is that all working?
We have a request from Kevin Schulte from across the river, he said he wants concrete.
Is he coming to get it?
I, I don't know, I, I just passed it on to Jasper, and passed it on to the contractor, I have no idea. It would be kind of up to that, I guess.
We, unless it's going to a place in the city that, that is undesirable to the city, I don't try to get into the mix of how they dispose of their materials, that's, you know, that's part of how they do their business and who they, who they want to do business with.
I know what the milling's already did. With the millings, we were involved and we wanted to make sure that we knew...
Well, we kept the millings.
Yeah, but also some people wanted to buy them, other people ended up coming to get some, I think Butler ended up coming to get some.
That was several years ago, right?
Yeah, a couple years ago. So I just wanted to make sure that it was public knowledge, where it's going, just, just in case there's other people that were interested.
Right.
Okay, I don't know if there needs to be a motion on that, or not, but, yeah.
I think, like you said, it's kind of, you know, it's their bid, you know, their project, you know, they, we need to probably walk to Bismarck or else, you know, they would like some closer.
The people that want that material are generally out there asking them, you know, or the contractor's savvy enough to find a close place, I mean, if he doesn't have to haul it real far, it's...
I just don't want to get into a situation where everyone's nice... I just don't want to get into a situation where everyone's nice, and they give them concrete, and then they dump it across the street. You know what I mean?
This is across the river.
Okay. You don't.
They did mention at the construction meeting that we were at, when they realized how far it was, they said, they did mention about the additional time and that that would be added on to the city's end, which was a little concerning.
I would, I would not be a favor of that.
And that, for that very reason, that is why I didn't get involved in how they disposed of their material. You know, it's not, but it's not anything we want to dictate.
Yes, but we don't want them to charge us for delivering it for them.
Exactly.
Would that run, would it run through the planning and zoning if someone in town wanted it, and they were gonna dump it in town, as it?
No. A couple of years ago.
There's really no dumping in town of stuff like that.
Well, a couple of years ago, it happened. You know? And that's the reason we're a little paranoid about that.
They have been gone through, um, either last year or before, that there was to be no more dumping of food. Just because of, the food is now being used for different things, and there's each kind of concrete or asphalt dumped into one of them, so.
And maybe that should, once they figure it out, that it should at least come back to us, so we know what's going to happen, so at least we're not involved, and we're not being charged for it.
Well, if they're gonna charge us, I think the, the guy needs to pick them up themselves.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, we're not gonna pay that.
Okay.
Excuse me, if you don't mind, if I speak on, on the millings part. The last street project I brought up to the commission, they would please consider using the millings. We have some gravel roads and alleyways still in the city. We utilize those there before they would allow somebody to take them outside the city for city use. So, we don't have to purchase gravel, which is costing.
And I think that's what we're doing, is we're using it as base on these roads. You know, we take it up and save it. And I know a few years back, they were giving it away, and it was, wow.
For whatever reason, the two thousand thirteen project contractor didn't use the millings as part of the street base, but they have since, and they plan to again this year.
I know part of the, the reasoning was, is the quality of the millings. They didn't have enough oil base in it, and that's why the contractor didn't want it. A lot of it was, uh, Butler was told, if you want it, come and get it, and he just started hauling it out as fast as he could before anyone else started taking it. He dumped a load of it over here, and then he was hauling it out to his new residents. I know, he even hauled some for me on Third Street, and I actually paid for that. But at least I utilized it in the city limits, so, yeah. And then I spread it myself.
Yeah, but that's, that's what you know, we keep it for city.
Right. And then the last bit that was left, they used at the old schoolhouse. So, at least that part of it was utilized at the end. So, I'm just asking for future reference if, if we could please try to keep the millings in the city for city use.
Well, and then that's what we're doing.
Right.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I just want to clarify.
Status on that ground source, Will? Are we still looking at this committee? I really think this should be brought up fast, because I don't want to lose that one point five million dollars.
That's gonna be discussed next week.
Thank you.
But you have to realize those, with that one point five million, it comes costless.
I know that, but it's still around one. Does anybody have anything on that? No? Okay. Uh, do you have any good chance to do the bill? Okay, so what's the bill?
I'll move that we pay the bills. Something like that.
Any discussion on the bill? Keith?
I.
Reese?
I.
Hi.